Okay. Good evening. I'm gonna have to turn to read the opening statement here, excuse me. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on April 24, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting this sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on April 19, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of this ongoing state of emergency by executive order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes, here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davids?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna? Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, let's begin. We have two resolutions this evening. The first is 105 Linden Lane, Block 31.04, Lot 8 in the R3-B zone. The resolutions were in your packet and on the website. If you've had a chance to review them and are comfortable with them, or if you have any questions or would like to make a motion, please do so.
Board members, just one comment. Paragraph 10 of the resolution, this is the neighbor's testimony. There are two words that were, should have been included in there. It is the second to the last sentence, and I'll just read part of it. It says, "Mr. Perona alternatively asked the applicant be required to install a fence along the entire length of the common property along the driveway to protect his property," and I think what should have been in there was protect his property from damage and then from drivers entering onto his property. Because I took another look at my notes and I think that he did express concern about damages as well.
Okay. So noted. Board members, comments, resolution?
I'll go to approve that.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Who moved that? I'm sorry.
They moved by Jim Davids, seconded by Eve Coulson.
Right. Whatever. Okay, Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second resolution is 660 Prettybrook Road, Block 4901, Lot 2 in the R1-T zone. Once again, the resolutions in your packets. Comments, questions, or motions, please?
All moved.
Thank you. Second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
He opposed it.
I voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have three applications this evening. The first is 403 Mount Lucas Road, Block 4301, Lot 9 in the R2-T zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, you'll recall this application, the board took jurisdiction previously. We're on 403 Mount Lucas, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so the board took jurisdiction at the last meeting. It got carried. So yes, everything is in order.
Good.
I could move the applicant over and he disappear.
Okay.
Yeah, I did see him. I don't know where.
I don't know where he went.
Derek, could you summarize your memo for our benefit and that of the audience?
Yes, sir.
And Derek, I'll swear you and I don't, Elizabeth, are you online now? All right, I'll just swear you in right now, Derek. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Karen, I am online.
That's okay. I'll swear in as soon as we get to your memo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The applicants Chow Hui, Jenny Liu, and Eugene Pierre Dees are the owners of 403 Mount Lucas. They are seeking a C2 variance to permit additions to a single-family dwelling and exception to the required height to setback ratio and the required garage setback from the nearest portion of the facade. The applicant is proposing to construct a second floor in addition, an exception to the required height to setback ratio and they're also looking for relief from the garage setback to properties located in the R2-T zone. The subject lot's not complying with regard to the required 65,430 square foot lot area requirement. The existing is 47,044 square feet. The existing single-family house complies with the applicable bulk requirements. The proposed second floor will contain a master bedroom, a guest room, and a full bath. The first floor will be renovated and contain a kitchen, living room, dining room, two bedrooms, full bath, and a powder room. They are proposing a two-car garage attached and will provide a storage area, mudroom, and an additional front entry. The required side entry garage setback is eight feet. While the garage does step back eight feet from the main house, the part of the addition which includes the new foyer is considered the nearest facade and requires a variance. They have requested a variance from the 1 to 1.5 height to setback. Propose as 1 to 1.26 and they're requesting a side entry garage variance from the required eight feet to a zero-foot setback. And they've requested consideration under the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Berger?
Derek, I just have a housekeeping question. Is the required setback eight feet or 12? Because earlier in your memo, it says 12.
I believe it's eight. Let me double check.
Okay.
Thank you.
My understanding is it's eight.
Yep.
Okay. Well, you want to check that and then we'll call on Elizabeth for summary of her memo?
Elizabeth's not a, this isn't.
She doesn't have one.
Oh, this isn't, okay.
Not this one.
Okay, then.
Be right back. Go ahead. I'll jump in after.
Okay. I guess we're ready for the applicant. Who's representing this case?
Hi, I'm Eugene Dees. I'm the property owner.
Claudia, can you swear him in, please?
I'll swear him in.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Dees, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hey.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the effort and the tremendous contributions that all of you make in this committee. So what we're doing, should I be sharing my screen or?
Mr. Dees, if, yeah, if you have an exhibit that you would like the board to consider, then yes, please share your screen.
So I can share screen here? All right. So. All right. So this is a one-story, single-family home of about 1,382 square feet. So that is very small. The existing home does not have a garage. It's a small space. It doesn't have a dining room. The living room and the dining room are combined. Two of the bedrooms are around 10 by 11 or so, and the master bedroom is okay. But it's a very small space. It's difficult to live in. It has low ceilings. The bedrooms are small and we share a single bathroom. So there's only one bath in this home. My wife and I both work from home on a regular basis. We have two children and they're serious musicians and it's kind of hard to make it in a home of that size. So in order to accommodate the needs of our family, we plan to add 2,197 square feet of space to the house. This includes the two-car garage. So we're trying to maintain the cottage character of the home. As you can see, it looks small from the road and it is small. So we don't want to make it a McMansion. The living space will not be anywhere close to McMansion size. We don't have a big budget and we believe that our proposal is within the spirit of the zoning ordinances. And we think that our proposal is in fact better for the neighborhood and for our neighbors than the project we would be required to do, don't receive the variance. So I can. So here is, we are in zoning R2-T and that's the red square that you see there. Our plan is to add a second floor on top of the main volume of the house and to add a garage to the north of the house. So that's basically it. We're just want to minimize the impact on the site. So here you can see the site. We want to minimize the impact. We want to keep as much open space as possible. We have some beautiful mature trees, some beautiful oaks are on the site. And if we tried to, we had one plan that expanded into the back and that would have taken out two stands of oak trees. And we really didn't want to do that. So I love the trees and it seems more parsimonious and certainly better for the site if we just build up one floor. So. Go here. So we wanted to add as little as possible to grade and to use the roof of the new garage as a green roof. And that was actually why we started this plan to begin with. I've always wanted a green roof. I love a green roof and as you can see here, it's a nice place to sit and we want to minimize the environmental impact of the project on the site. And now we know that we have to do it to comply with the water management regulations, but we had that in our plan to begin with before we even knew it was required. So this. This floor is from we bought the property. The roof now needs changing. It's not in good shape. And we think that the most economical way to do this is to add a second floor over the existing volume as an attic. So in this slide, you can see the low volume that contains the kitchen. I guess maybe that was better in the other one. We'd like you to maintain, we'd like to maintain the modest character of the building and keep the front facade at the height it is today and only increase the height of the roof itself. So the facade doesn't actually increase with this design. Again, here you can see the volume of the kitchen. We're proposing to add over the existing volume of the house, not over the kitchen, and that's important. So the kitchen remains at the current height, which is about 10 feet. And the entire change to the existing structure is the raising of the roof, except over the kitchen. Then here you can see, "To achieve the second level in an economical way, we're not adding a second floor in a conventional way. Instead, we're proposing to replace the existing roof with a steeper angled roof in order to provide the appropriate headroom for the new master suite and guest room and introduce dormers for light and views." So as you can see, the facade doesn't change. All we're doing is making the roof steeper and somewhat higher. And that's why the issue we'll get to with the, what is it called? The height to side of yard is actually important because that's what makes, that little space there is what makes the design of the master bedroom feasible. By having that steeper roof, we have enough headroom for the new master suite and guest room. And we're introducing dormers, as you can see, for light and views. We keep the front facade at the height it is today and only increase the height of the roof itself. So as I said, the roof has to be replaced anyway. So this is, it's important that the strategy allows us to maintain the low profile of the building by not extending vertically the plane of the front elevation. If we were to do what is allowed by zoning, we would end up extending the face of the building vertically and it would be more visually massive than the tip of the roof that is currently encroaching on the side yard. And ultimately, what we want to do is less than what our neighbor did. So if you look at the house on the right, the property line is just to the left, just to the left of the row of bushes that you see there. You see that the row of bushes, I think they're, I think they're lilacs, I think. But there's a row of bushes right there. It's just to the left of that. So the garage is less than three feet from the boundary on that side and the height of the roof is about 25 feet and it's only 12 feet from the property line. So we're just doing what our neighbor did. Again, you can see the height of that house and in a sense, we are not doing anything significantly different than the neighbor's house. And theirs is much closer to the property line. The ordinance also calls for the garage to step back eight feet from the closest elevation. This would add an additional step back and encroach in the yard further as well as cause additional construction expenses. We're seeking a variance of the requirement to step back the garage eight feet from the nearest elevation point to the garage. So the garage is set back eight feet and the only other piece, and maybe I can draw it. This is the entranceway. So in a sense, the entranceway is set back eight feet. It's part of the garage. It's just the connection between the garage and the main house. So the green roof area is the garage. This is an entranceway and this is the raised roof. You can see where my cursor is moving around there. So we've set back the entranceway and the garage eight feet as per the requirement. And in a sense, it isn't more than the garage. It's just the entranceway. So I think that we're within the spirit of the ordinance because although it is not strictly speaking the garage, it's the entranceway to the garage and to the house and the connection between the garage and the house. So we are trying to maintain the modest character of the existing building, minimize the impact on the site and keep things simple. The front facade at the height, the front facade will be at the height it is today and the only increases in the height of the roof itself. The setback, as you can see here, is at eight feet and it is the garage and an entranceway and that's it. Sorry, and the stairway. So the stairway goes in here up to this house. If we put the stairway in the house, wouldn't be worth raising the roof because the house is so small. So I'm open for any questions and interested in hearing what you have to say.
Board members, any questions of the applicant?
Is there, are there architectural plannings of this? See the plan view? Do you have, you have section elevations?
I think. Those have all been submitted, so you have those.
Packet had a full set of drawings in it, Jim.
Okay. There, well, that's, okay.
As you can see, the elevation there is only a little corner. That's the only problem with that line. Significantly less than the property adjacent to us.
Derek, quick question. Are chimneys exempt from all this? From heights?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was an existing chimney.
And I will just circle back. The side garage setback is eight foot, not 12.
I believe, if, Jim, are you done? Can I comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Done, yes.
Was that, is that chimney existing now at that height?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't think it was that tall. All right, that's fine.
I'm sorry. It may have to be raised. I think the chimney will have to be raised slightly in order to meet fire code, yes.
Well, it has to be up above the roof. I have, I have a question and a comment. My question is, if the roof, that roof over the over the main house, and I understand your concern about raising the, raising the front facade, but if that roof were to drop down to the line of the height to setback ratio, it looks like it would come down, what, two feet or something?
And you'd be basically hitting your head, I think. When you got to bed in the morning, if you stood on the bed, you'd hit your head.
So how much, how much space would that? Could you still have a functioning master bedroom in that space?
I have, functioning? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it would be functioning. Would it be odd? Yes.
Well, I mean, what would be, is there enough space within the area of the slope portion of the roof to create? I'm just trying to understand. I mean, personally, I think the roof is very high. The amount of extra space is minimal. I understand that. But I'm just wondering if it can be workable bringing it down a little bit.
Well, we've spoken with the architect and that would make the roof in place is only about six feet high. So it's not that, it's not really, it's not really an ideal-looking room then, if you meet that slope.
I have to look at the, I have to look at the drawing. So that was the one comment, the one question. And my comment would be in relation to the variance for the setback of the garage from the principal facade. Just a comment that I think, I think, obviously, I think Derek, you were correct in calling this out. But I think in this case, the intent is met, but not the letter of the ordinance. I mean, the garage is the principal portion of this, of the necessity for the addition. And it is set back eight feet. It happens to have a new doorway into it that leads into the, it's a secondary entrance, although they are eliminating the main entry. But, so, I mean, I'm comfortable with the setback from the principal facade, even though it's in deference to what the ordinance is. So those are my question and my comment and that's it. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I do have one.
Go ahead.
In fact, just imagine you had a huge knife and you just chopped off this, the corner that is in violation of the height to side yard setback. Then the huge area of attic bedroom space would essentially be in compliance. Is that?
That's what I was, that's what I was asking. It's exactly what, the same question and you're right.
Well, but I'm saying just take off that corner. Don't have to lower the whole roof.
Well, that's true. You could do that. You could just lob off that last, I don't know, five feet, something like that?
It's structurally a little problematic to build that, that, what do you call it? It would almost be a, I don't know what you call it, but if you had this roof sloping down right there, it would be an odd roofing feature and the adjacent home isn't anywhere close to that.
With the adjacent home, although that was done, that's a totally separate situation. It doesn't, in my opinion, set a precedence for, for the basis of the approval here. It is an existing fact on the ground, but. So, sorry.
I, I have a question, Steve. Actually, Steve, it's a question for you, so I understand. You said the roof seems a bit, a bit high. Relative, relative to what? I'm trying to understand your.
Well, I think relative to the, to the front facade of the existing house. It just seems to be a very high roof. I mean, not, not by.
Okay, yeah, because now I understand what you meant because the height of the roof, as you know, is well below, well below the zoning.
Yes, yes.
And, yeah, okay, now I understand what you mean.
No, but yeah, thank you.
Visually.
Yes, visually, that's all.
Okay.
High slope.
I was playing architect. I'm sorry.
Yeah. The pitch is extreme.
The reason that the roof goes up there is because of the, in order to the square footage in the bedrooms, the roof has to be higher and steeper. And that's why at the, at the highest point, it's very narrow.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm trying to find the drawings. I'm just looking for the drawings right now. But let's, let's move on. I mean, I don't want to hold it up. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, so at this point, what we'll do is you'll have the, the, we're going to go into the, we're going to open it to the public for comment. But before we do, is there anything you want to say in summary before I open the comments up to the public?
I thank, I thank you for your time and I hope you'll consider this application. We've put a lot of time and thought into it and, yeah, I really hope that you're able to see these variances as consistent with the spirit of the neighborhood.
Mr. Dees, I have two, two items. One, that's all right with you. We'll collectively call the slides you've showed today, your Exhibit A1. Okay, and the other thing is, you may have seen in Mr. Berger's memo, he was sort of laying out the criteria with respect to the purposes of zoning and that is applicable to your project because you're looking for what's called a C2 variance. So I don't know if you'd like to speak to any of that or just explain why you believe it does meet the criteria.
I, I don't know why it meets the criteria for C2, so I'm sorry. I can't, I can't help you with that. Perhaps I brought an architect or an attorney here. I don't know why it meets the criteria for C2. I, I take that on faith.
I do have a question. Is it, is it a two-car garage?
Yes, what's being added is a two-car garage.
With a lot of storage?
With some storage space, yes. Because there's no attic, right? The way this design works, you have effectively then no attic. So the two-car garage does include some storage space.
Okay. All right, would you like to comment before we open it up to the public?
I.
You don't have to. You don't have.
I've spoken to most of my neighbors about this and I would be surprised if anybody came here. One person was going to speak, is speak in support, but he wasn't, he was available last week, but not this week, this month. So I don't imagine there's anybody here to comment.
We'll find out. Okay. Claudia, we're going to open the meeting up to the public. Is there anybody who's indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
There you go. You were right. Okay, so we'll give it a second here or two. And then we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Okay, nobody raised their hands. So we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, before we go into executive session, you can summarize or make any additional comments you'd like the board to hear before we discuss it amongst ourselves and vote.
I have no comments. I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And, yeah, I look forward to seeing what you say.
Okay, very good. All right, board members, we're in executive session. Do we want to discuss this?
I, I think it's, it's, we're sort of bizarre looking, but I think there's plenty of room on that property to handle it. You know, I don't see anything wrong with it. Um, you know, I don't see anything wrong with it. I, I, I don't see any reason, George, why you'd want to cut that corner off. Just to meet the requirement, so it's okay with me.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's a modest house and the, the reason why I guess the roof looks out of proportion is because it's so modest to begin with, and I think you could monkey with the roof line to make it fit. It might look even more odd. And I don't see a big detriment to having that little corner there.
Okay, any other comments?
I, I do. Steve.
Yes, please.
Yeah. I do support it. I, it's a, it is somewhat undersized lot, but he's, it's still providing more than required setbacks, less than permitted, you know, FAR impervious coverage. That corner of the roof is, he would, yeah, that part's new construction, but it's extending up from existing. So I, I just think he's, he's tried to not build a big ma- mac mansion. And there's so many uh, pluses that I, I can support the two variances.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? All right, I'd like to make, just say a couple of things. I, I did comment on the, on the height of the roof, but as as Bernice and Stephen alluded, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a little different. I would, I personally would do it a little differently, but this is up to the applicant. I think the, I think the height to setback ratio variances in this particular case is de minimis. And I look at the section through the, through the, through the bedroom and dropping it down would create a little bit, it would just create a little bit of an issue with the, with the bedroom area, so I'm okay with it. I do have a question, though. Are you eliminating the front door or are you leaving it in?
No, the existing front door is being removed. It's always been a useless door. Neither the previous owners nor we have ever really been able to make use of it, so.
Okay.
Equidistant from both sides of both driveways.
All right. Well, no, I, and the, and the other, my other comment is just the issue with the garage, as I said before. I, I understand why you did it and, and I'm comfortable with it. So in my opinion, I would support the, the application of the variances. So that being said, if someone would like to come forward and make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of, this is Michael Floyd.
Second.
Of the C2.
I'll second that, Steven Schreiber.
Good, thank you. Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Sign?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck with it, and I think it'll be an asset to the community.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your work. You're doing great things for the, for the community. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Our next application is Nine McLean Street, block fifteen point oh one, lot eighty-eight in the R four dash B zone. It's the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. Karen, are the
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Derek, could you summarize your memo for us?
Can, can we close, can we, Mr. D's, can you close your?
I'm trying, I'm trying to close it. I'm having difficulty for some reason. Today, leaving the meeting. Thank you.
Too much fun.
Okay.
Okay. Andrew, now you know, and Christine, Kristen Schroder are the owners and Nine McLean Street. They're the applicants. They're seeking a C1 variance to make construction of a rear two-story addition, basement window and a patio, an exception to the required smaller and combined side yard setbacks and height to setback ratio. Properties located in the R four zone in the former borough. The subject lot is non-compliant with the required sixty-foot lot width. It's thirty point five feet in width. It's also non-compliant regarding the six thousand square foot lot area requirement. The existing lot area is three thousand six hundred seventy-one square feet. And the existing house itself is non-compliant regarding the required eight-foot setback. It's two point nine feet. Doesn't comply with the required twenty-foot combined side yard setback. It's ten point eight feet. And it doesn't comply with the height to setback ratio, which is four point five to one. It's eight point one on the west elevation. The subject property is located in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District and the HBC did review it and Elizabeth will comment on that after I finish this, my memo. An applicant is proposing a rear two-story addition. The first floor will be comprised of a new kitchen, a full bath and a one-story eight-by-twelve addition off the rear elevation. The second floor consists of a master bath, a full bath and, and a full bath. And there are additional interior improvements that are permitted as of right. The following variances are required. Smaller side yard setback requirement is eight. The proposed is two point three feet and that's to the roof edge of the addition. The combined side yard setback requirement is twenty. They proposed a six point nine six feet, and again, to the roof edge. The smaller side yard setback is eight feet for the the patio and the existing is four point five and the combined side yard setback requirements twenty, existing is thirteen point four for the patio. And there's a basement ingress window, excuse me, egress window. The setback requirement for the smaller side yard is eight feet and the proposed is one point four feet. And the combined side yard setback is twenty feet and again, to the egress window is six point two feet. The height to setback ratio, the requirement is four point five to one. The proposed is nine point one on the west side and four point nine to one on east side. And the applicant is requesting consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Okay. Elizabeth, can you summarize your memo for us? I believe you have to be sworn in.
Yes, Elizabeth, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
As Mr. Bridger stated, this property is located within the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. The applicant came before HPC in October, I'm sorry, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three for a concept review, at which time they received comments and suggestions from the commission. HPC was happy when they returned with their formal application on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, I'm sorry, on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, that they incorporated those suggestions into their final design. And the building addition to the rear of the existing house is done in a fashion that retains and respects the original streetscape and historic house. They felt that the, the rear addition to the existing house and the new two-story addition roof line seamlessly worked with the existing roof itself. The height of the addition was no higher than the existing height of the roof. That way, it did not impact the streetscape. The rear portion of the house is proposed to be demolished to be able to accommodate the, the new two-story addition and the one-story addition. HPC voted unanimously to support this application and they supported the partial demolition required to be able to make these improvements. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, all right, who will be presenting this application? Ah, Mr. Kennedy. Okay.
Members of the board, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the homeowners here this evening. We've got two witnesses, our, our, first the homeowner and our architect, Ron Berlin, but just to quickly summarize of what Ms. Kim and Mr. Bridger just indicated, one, very much appreciated of the, the process here. Our architect and, and the homeowners met with HPC twice, first as a concept and then again formally. A great process with a lot of excellent feedback that resulted in the project that you're looking at tonight. This is your classic C1 hardship. This is a severely undersized lot and not just undersized and with an area, but actually slanted for some reason as well, so that as you reach head to the back of the lot, staying parallel to the house next door actually results in a slightly more severe side yard setback situation. We feel that the, the modest renovation that was done respects the neighborhood, respects the existing home and respects the neighbors as well by stepping itself back. There, there's a list of variances, but these are all essentially different ways of measuring existing conditions. And while we do step back further into the lot, we also step back away from the, the side lot line at each step, including reconfiguring some of the existing home to be a little bit further than, than it was in the before condition. There's no particular magic to three feet, but our architect will talk about why we stayed, we, we actually kind of angled the home a little bit to to respect that three feet and, and make sure that, that buffer was there. Again, two witnesses here this evening. First, maybe you'll have them both sworn in at once, if that's right, Ms. Casey.
Yes, Mr. Maginot and Mr. Berlin, do you both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do. I do as well.
Thank you.
So, Andrew, if you want to just briefly introduce yourself, I know the, the boards heard the sagas of growing families and tiny houses on tiny lots before. But if you just want to orient the board to your, your problem here and, and why you engaged, Mr. Berlin, to help you solve it.
Yeah, sure. So I'm Andy Maginot. I'm an engineering instructor at Drexel University. Unfortunately, my wife cannot be here with us today. She had a family emergency and can't attend. But she, she works for a materials company and buys and sells chemicals and supplies. But we moved to Princeton, New Jersey in twenty sixteen. Lovely home. It's, it's quite quaint and small. I think we're running around thirteen hundred square feet, two bedrooms. We've been, we love the community, have been very happy to be here. But fast forward a bit, eight years to today, now we have two children, one five, one almost two. So the two-bedroom situation doesn't work for four people. My wife is also from Germany. And so we have visiting family frequently. When they come, they come for a month or even more, so the space can get pretty tight. And we both have jobs where on, during the week, there's some days at home, some days in the office. And having some space to, to work at home is important for us. So we tried to, I guess, the short story, to make the story shorter, we're, we're hoping to make a modest addition to the property to accommodate the needs of our family and work needs and our visiting family as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions of the applicant or Mr. Kennedy or anyone? Ms. Kim? Okay. Hearing no questions. Mr. Kennedy, we're gonna open it up to executive session. Do you?
If you're ready to approve it, we'll, we'll take that, but I know, happy to have an architect.
No, 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 I misspoke, I misspoke. We're gonna open it up to public comment.
Wait a minute, what about Mr. Berlin?
Oh, my gosh, I didn't hear Mr. Kennedy say Mr. Berlin would like to speak. I'm sorry.
I assume he does. We just swore him in, so.
All right.
It, it is. We'll, we'll be brief, though, reading the room, but.
I don't want to minimize Mr. Berlin. He does a wonderful job.
So, Ron, if you could, I know you're, you've testified for this board before, but for the record, if you could briefly give the board the benefit of your credentials and confirm your license and, and introduce yourself.
Oh, that, oh, that.
Yes.
My name is Ronald Berlin and I studied at Yale University and Princeton. Here, got my graduate degree from Princeton and I'm registered in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York and New Hampshire. And I have my own practice here in Princeton since nineteen eighty-eight, I think.
Very nice. Well, you testified before us before, so we'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if it's, if it's all right, I'd like to mark, we, we submitted some exhibits. We'll, we'll just have one, I believe it's eleven, eleven slides and one of them says thank you, so don't think it's too long.
So Ryan, how do you want to do this? Shall we go through the slides or shall I just introduce?
So what, if you want to start, we just kind of introduce your, your, your approach to the problem here and then we can start to, we can orient the board to.
The, the, the clients came to me with, in, in some respects, it's a typical program, but in other respects, it, it, it wasn't. And that's partly due to the, the the visiting parents and other, other family members from Germany to make a special accommodation for them in this project. And boy, I really didn't want to just extrude this farther back into their rear yard. And also, they really value their rear yard. Remember, this property is getting pretty close to half the required minimum size. And so I did what I thought was really the most natural. It's be, almost beyond modest. It's even, can I use the word humble? No, I won't go that far. But it's a very, it's a very simple and straightforward addition at the back. But I think it's going to really give them a lot of pleasure and space, so. I think perhaps that, there's the location in a pretty dense, one of the densest neighborhoods in town. And Ryan, do you have the, do you have the slide that shows? If we complied, this is what you would see.
Sure, sure. They'll, they'll guess here, then here. Before we get there, here's, you can see, you know, one house away from the more dense Witherspoon district. Maybe here's a overhead view next that shows its relationship to the neighboring properties and the properties behind it. And, Ron, I believe this before, shows the location where we're going to be doing the addition of the rear.
And while we are on this slide, hang on for a second, please. We'd be removing about the last ten feet of this house, which although it looks perfectly integrated with the rest of the house, it's really different. And there's probably some story of porch conversion. But its foundations are merely pure foundations and they're no good. Like it's, this is an unsound last ten feet of the house. So that gets removed and the new construction is partly in the zone of existingness and partly it expands beyond that. Can you go back one slide, please, Ryan? Yeah, this is an interesting slide because it shows this, there's a kind of a park-like you know, it's like all the little pieces of everyone's backyard contribute to an open, almost communal courtyard feel about that. And again, here, I just didn't want to impinge farther into that. Particularly since, as I mentioned, my clients really value the yard that they have. But it's kind of an interesting scene back there. Okay, forward, please.
And, and Ron, to that end, you can kind of see it here, but there is a large paved area in the back, some kind of sports court or a basketball court that we're taking up as part of this project as well.
Yes, yeah. So we, we do pretty well. There you go. I didn't want to build that green thing. I didn't want my clients to live in that, so.
So maybe just to clarify here, so this, the site's plot plan on the left shows both the, I guess the blue part is the existing. the, I guess the blue part is the existing home uh, and the part that's hatched here is the part that's was approved for demolition, but it's essentially going to be rebuilt in this same location. And then this red outlined area is the new space that's being created. Is that?
That's it. And the darker, the darker part of that red outlined area is the two-story addition. And the, the lighter part, that little carbuncle is the one-story piece. The green bar is what, what would be allowed to be constructed as of right respecting very literally the required setbacks in the zone.
So that this house as it exists was, you know, stuck right, you know, as many in this neighborhood are. Um, with no regard to the setbacks that came much later and uh, none of them have either respect them or have any ability to frankly, because of the size of their.
Right. This, this also the, shows very clearly the peculiar skewed parallelogram that is this property shape.
And one other thing to note here, you know, in the before condition, the smaller setback was actually 2.9 feet. And, and with this program run, you were actually able, I mean, it is, it is a minimal, but you're not just keeping it at that three feet, but you're stepping back first a little bit to, to keep, you know, to expand the 2.9 feet to three feet at these locations. And then to step back even further another foot for the newish part of the addition. Is that right?
Yeah, actually more, more than a foot there for, for that, for the um, one-story addition.
And, and the, the left and right, to the right side of the screen, that's the existing front elevation. And then the new front elevation with the uh, the red outlined essentially part of the addition shown behind.
Right.
So Ron, how, what are we looking at here? This is the.
Mm-hmm. So here you can easily see the addition on the right is that that gable, the cross gable and the, the pitch of the roof matches that of the existing. The ridges align and, you know, I think the idea is that it should uh, appear that it was always almost all, as if it were always present. And you can see on the right side, um, it breaks free a little bit. Uh, and that's a, and a, a part that's concealed from the street. Uh, it's the one-story addition and the owners who so enjoy their backyard can actually grab their backyard from their master bedroom too by stepping out onto that balcony. So that, it works really well for them, I think. And here is the, this, this gable is um, very shallow. Like it barely steps out from the existing west-facing wall on the right side. Um, but it's, I, you know, this is like, maybe it's the obsessive architect in me, but I, I had to have an Audi there. I couldn't have that be an innie. So hence, um, this slight step and then following the angle of the property line at three feet. If you follow me.
Maybe just to point out in passing here, there's, there's one window in the, in the center of this facade that is a, would like to have, but perhaps, um, I think as we said to HPC, may not actually make it when it comes down to uh, construction time.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's possible that we have a, a rim choice. You, you know, we'll have to examine what the existing construction is, but if there's a rim choice there, I don't want to interrupt the integrity of that structure. So we, we'll, we'll just have to see when the time comes and we can do some probing of the existing structure.
And you've got the, the front facades compared to what you see from the street. And I, I suppose that's perhaps shows that, that you, you can't really see much about what we're doing in the back here.
That's right. Yeah.
Hmm. Next slide, we, we list the variances that are needed. And you know, the, I think the important thing to show here is the, that existing column. Uh, almost, almost half the size that's permitted um, in the area. Uh, just about half of the lot width as well at 30 and a half feet where 60 is required. Those are where the challenges of dealing with the house at this existing site are. Um, the uh, existing, while there, the numbers are new um, and revised slightly. Um, the story of the setbacks is both the same as the existing condition in that the house was built in this location. And, and hopefully we've shown that by stepping it back um, and, and respecting those lot lines as best we can and even more so than the existing home, um, that we're, you're doing really all that one can do to, to create a modest addition here. Um, uh, in a, in a home with an extremely constrained lot. And I think this last slide tries to kind of show those pinch points. So you can see where that, Ron, I don't know if it's fair, I mean, I guess it is a, a, a ridge of that uh, of that new feature, but ultimately it is almost flush with that side. So that this red arrow here lined up on the, on the side elevation with the site sketch kind of shows where um, where that is. And remarkably, it still kind of continues to step back a little bit or is angled to try to follow the lot line that is askew. Um, a little bit, then you can see where the porch portion, the one porch, the one-story addition is stepped back even further than existing house. So with, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we, we really appreciate um, your time and, and HPT, HPC's time, you know, times two in particular on this one to get us to the point where we have these plans to, to show you here tonight. Um, it's, it's hard to deal with a lot of this, a lot of this with. And um, I, I think, we hope you agree with HPC that, that this is a, an approach that respects the house and the neighborhood. Um, gives them a little bit of, of more space um, uh, in, in the best way that you could with, with a lot of this size. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I have two questions.
Please.
Uh, how many, how many cars will you be able to park in your driveway?
Two.
Is there room for two?
Yes. And in fact, their location doesn't change because right now they don't, they don't pull the innermost car all the way back. There are garbage cans that are stored there and so forth. So it actually, it's status quo for the parking.
Okay. A second question, do you know what the ex- existing square footage is? And what will the new square footage of the house be?
I do, but I'm, I'm not sure. Let me see if I can get to this. Yeah. Hang on a moment, please. The existing area of the house is 1,524 square feet and proposed 1,994 square feet.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Thank you.
Please.
Um. Could you put up the um, um, the front facade, the, you know, the, the view from the south?
You want the, the photograph, Michael, or, or the drawing?
The drawings, because you have existing and um, proposed. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I guess, you know, my, my concern, and I, I haven't heard you speak to it, is on the east side of the building, the new construction is actually making the side setback worse. As far as, you know, I'm kind of okay with you going back, but you're also, um, you know, the facade of the addition is now closer to your east side neighbor. That's, that's one thing and there's not a lot of room there to start with. Of course, it has those evergreen bushes, two-story fence now. But can you speak to that? Have you spoken to uh, the neighbor?
Well, uh, the applicant, um, for every one of the hearings that we've done, uh, sent a, a, a note to all the, the neighbors, inviting them to talk with him and her, uh, and soliciting their comments and objections or praise. And I don't think, did, Andy, did you hear from anyone at all?
I haven't been contacted by anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, anyway, I do believe, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we have spoken to a few of our neighbors and most of them have been very supportive. Or they all have been very supportive of, of what we're doing.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, that, that is, my concern is, yeah, taking a, um, a, a, a side yard deficiency back, expanding it that way is less of a concern to me than making it more impactful on the neighboring property. And since portoning is to deal with the impact outside of the lot. That's why you have lot lots. Um, the other concern I do have, you know, I think this is a standard design and a lot of these narrow buildings do extend backwards. One thing that's permitted that you're doing, but I worry how close people are to a second floor balcony. You know, if my bedroom was right next to that, um, you know, I, I'd hope you would think about that. You know, you think about the people that are outside your building.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
That's, that's, those are my, my two concerns. And also I, I'm not really concerned with the, the exit windows, but I, I just wanted to know, how is that constructed? I realize that that extends into the side yard, but what does that look like?
Uh, there is, there's no egress window uh, in the side yard. That's just a basement window.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the egress window, if you want to call it that. I'm, I just always want to be able to get people out. If there's any way I can make that, you know. So there's a, because this, the land slopes somewhat from front to back. I saw an opportunity uh, to make an even more generous window at the very back where you could um, open that casement and um, easily, pretty easily get out there. I even considered making it a walkout basement, but it, it would have protruded too, too much into the, um, into that backyard. So this, on the side, it's just, it's just a generous uh, basement window. Yep.
Okay, yeah, I, I misunderstood with Mr. Kennedy.
No, it's okay.
I, I thought maybe it was extending further into the, the side yard, but you're saying it's basically flush with the facade.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's just a window well, a conventional basement window well. And it's probably just, you know, the metal corrugated metal window well of galvanized steel. Um, I have a photo of, of the backyard looking back towards the two neighbors. You want to have a look at it?
I'd like to see that.
Okay, that may, may help. So may I share screen?
Sure. I guess we'll, we'll, we'll mark this as our second.
Exhibit A2? Got it. Okay.
So this is the subject property in the middle.
Yes.
Um, it would be coming forward. I can't remember what that dimension is, but remember we're killing 10 feet of this depth. So we're not coming out terribly much farther than this. Here's the neighbor to the west.
Yes.
This is the neighbor to the east. And the new addition will, uh, somewhere around this line, I'd say, is where that would be coming.
I think a, another picture that shows it is, is from the front looking towards the back. Where you have the car in the driveway, you know, the actual photograph.
Uh, hang on a sec. I think I've got something. Hold on.
Yeah, you do.
Well, I know, um, I know Ryan has one. Let's see if I, yeah, let's see. There.
Will be exhibit.
That's part of your first exhibit, right?
No, this is, this, it, a cropped version of this photograph is in the, in, in A1, but this, the entirety of this is, I guess, probably separate. So this.
Yeah, the crop, the crop picture is really informative or shows it. I don't know.
This, this is another exhibit, Mr. Kennedy?
That this will be A, A, A3.
A3, okay.
Yeah, there, but anyway, that's, you would be building out on that east side for whatever length it is. Um, and as I say, then you have those, your neighbor has those bushes that's like a a, a, a longstanding screening. But that's, that's my, that's my concern. As I say, you, you had a much better close-up of the driveway. But.
Hmm. I don't know if I have. Yeah. Okay, ready?
Yeah. Yeah, I have it in front of me, so. So you, you'd basically be building out the addition, what, close to sort of where that open space is? Yeah.
Yeah. That's about right. Yeah, I'd say so.
That's taken up a fair percentage of the side yard.
And. Not that bad. I mean, it's, it's a judgment call.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Hopefully the, the foliage there will remain after you get done with the addition.
That's the intention.
Well, that's the plan. Yes, it is.
Um, can preserve them as well. They, I think the, the, the plants actually lie right on the property line between, like where the, the, the roots go into the ground and the trunk.
I think so too.
I don't even, yeah, it's probably haven't been groomed more.
Yeah, I imagine.
We don't know who should be doing what portions.
Um, I'm just trying to find, I'm somewhere I've got the notes that it's the distance between the two, the finished distance between the two buildings will be, it's pretty decent, I think.
Decent, decent relative to what?
Relative to existing. I mean, it's not, hang on a second. You know what? It's a ju- it's, this is a, a judgment call.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I won't belabor it more than this last sentence. It's not a judgment call, it's a measure. They're close together.
They're closer together.
Yeah. They're a lot closer than any of us live in. That's it. Um, could you, could you speak to, it looks like, um, you've tried to keep the impact of, of new windows down. Um, could you go over how do you have your windows sighted relative to your neighboring properties?
Yes. Hang on a sec. Uh, let's, I'm still sharing screen, right? So, oops.
I think your, your schematics also.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
So this is the, this is the, uh, the, where the addition extends out towards the eastern neighbor. And yes, there are, there are only two windows in that, um, in that addition.
And, and Ron, from a, I mean, I know there's no variance for this, but from a, the revised section two or three, if I have the numbers right, but the relationship of these windows uh, to the neighboring properties, this complies um, from a.
Oh, correct. Yeah, yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant, the architect? The owner? I'll ask just one question, which I. Pretty much know the answer to is no additional land could have been acquired to minimize the impact of this. It's, I'm asking, I'm just asking.
No, that's, I've never heard that one before, but no.
Right, okay. All right, so if there are no other questions. Um. Miss, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to? Do you have any other witnesses?
No, that that is it, and 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 thank you all, um, and and thanks HPC for supporting. These these modest um. Changes, one thing I I I don't know we focus too much on, but remember that the lot is skewed from the front left to the back right, so. The the part that we were just focusing on that extends a little bit more into the larger side setback. Actually, you know, we're talking about the minimum distance on the front, uh, because we kind of skewed things back into the right to kind of follow that narrow path. Um, through the site, there is an additional um. Uh, you know, while it's uh. In the the front part, you know, it's the combined side yard setback is six point, oh, about seven feet. Um, as you go back, there's like another foot there, because it the the lot skews. Back into to the right, so while at that pinch point, it's that point, but. By putting the the addition back in that section, it does take advantage of or or follow how the lot kind of. Curves or or is angled back into the right a bit, um, but with with that, um, I I the. The team here tried their their best to to squeeze a a a little bit more. Um, space into this very narrow lot in a way that um. Again, uh, we and HPC think respects the the neighborhood and and deals with these challenges as as almost as 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 best as best we could, so.
And I think that, you know, the alternative would have entailed. Uh, a a. Pretty bloody minded, you know, extrusion. Just straight back, uh, and it just. From a, from a planning point of view, but even from a kind of. The aesthetics of form, it just was. Um, ununappealing, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of program that that had to get shoehorned in here. But to your point, Ryan, it the. The neighboring house, because of the skewed property line, the neighboring house is actually closer here than it is farther back here. That is, you you get a little more relief, as it were, as you move farther back into the property. But. There it is. So.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, Mr. Kennedy, you did mention the skewed lot line at the beginning, so. Um. But thank you for summarizing that once again. Um, okay, so um, we'll go into the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. I'll wait a couple of seconds here. And hearing, no one willing wanting to speak, we'll close the public portion. Again, Mr. Kennedy. Summarize before we go into executive session.
Uh, I I just thank you guys again, I think. Due to the lack of public comment, and if I were to summarize again, it would be just repeating myself too too quickly in succession, so again, thank you all tonight uh for your for your time. Uh, much appreciated uh your consideration of this this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, we're going into executive session, questions, comments, or motions? Anyone? Well, I think it's a, personally, I think it's a well-done addition, I am a little concerned, as I believe Mr. Floyd is about the. The right-hand side towards the back. Um. I hope the planting can be maintained, although you'd have to find some pretty slim carpenters to go in there to finish it. Um. So. Um. I I like it. It's a tough situation, I think it's a well-done solution.
I agree. I move, we approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a. A motion and a second, um, any discussion of the motion? Before we vote?
Who's second? Who's second?
Uh, Mr. Davich. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Bye.
Okay.
All right, um. Moving right along, we are now at uh our third and last hearing. Five sixteen Cherry Hill Road, block twenty-two oh one, lot twenty-nine in the RA zone. Karen is the noticing in order.
It is, and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo for us, please? You're you're muted.
Excuse me. Uh. Lori and Anil Kumar are the owners and applicants for five sixteen Cherry Hill Road. They are seeking a lot area variance to permit the construction of a new fifty-six hundred square foot home. Uh, the required lot area is four acres, the existing is one point seven nine five. Acres and the required lot frontage, uh, or excuse me, lot width is two hundred feet and the existing is one fifty-three point three. You might recall, we saw this uh a similar application on this lot, uh, probably two years ago. Um. The existing house has been demolished. Um, the new home will feature a full basement, kitchen, living room, dining room, lot, five bedrooms, five and a half baths, and a three-car attached garage, the subject property, um. Has variances as I indicated earlier for the required four-acre lot requirement existing is one point seven five nine five, and the. Required width is two hundred feet as measured through the building and it's one fifty-three. Feet, three inches, they've requested consideration under the C-one criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay, um, who's going to be presenting this application?
Um. Lori Kumar and Louisa Bartle Clayton.
Okay. Karen, can you swear in there?
I will, um. Mrs. Kumar, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful, I will also swear you and Ms. Clayton, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do. So first of all, I want to thank the committee for um accepting our application. Um, my husband and I, Anil, we moved here in nineteen eighty-six, uh, right out of graduate school to start our jobs. Um, we've lived in three different, this would be our third house. Um, and we've lived mostly in the Montgomery Princeton area. Um, we enjoy the diversity of the community, the walkability, the hiking, the bike trails, um. The easy access to cities as well as international travel, as a lot of our family lives internationally. Um. The diversity of the community is important to us, um, particularly as we age. We enjoy the cultural environment and the events that are open to the community, as well as the ability to um, you know, volunteer. Um, I currently work at the animal shelters at least uh four or five times a week. Um. As we retire, and I've I'm already retired, uh, my husband is still working. We want to age in place in Princeton, and hence why we bought this lot. We also bought the lot because it was very natural with all the big trees, the wetland area. And the ability for us to build gardens and natural gardens, um, so that we can attract birds and bees and. Um, butterflies and all kinds of things that are really important to this environment. We also want to age in place, so we want to build the house such that it's going to accommodate us as we become less mobile. Um, we have a lot of visiting family that comes from all over, um, so we are building a house to enable them to come and stay long periods of time with us. Um. As I said, uh, we want to stay in this area because we we fell in love with it in nineteen eighty-six when we moved. And so therefore, uh, we are submitting this application and then hopefully, um. It it will sit well with the committee. Louisa?
Thank you, thanks Lori. Um, greetings zoning board, thank you for hearing us tonight and reviewing our application. As Derek mentioned, you saw this exact same application less than two years ago. Uh, the previous owners had asked for the two same two variances because. These two variances go along with the lot. Uh, they don't go along with the house, they don't go along anything else, they go along with the lot, so this lot, um. Can I share my screen, Steve?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just gonna do two.
By the way, just as an aside, Louisa, we do accept you as a uh an expert in your field.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, okay, let me see about sharing my screen, so. Uh. Okay. So can you see, so I'm showing you, hopefully you can see the Princeton consolidated zoning map. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the lot here, and this is all, you know, the port, the smaller portion of it was on the drawings that you all have. But I'll just show you sort of the greater um map, so this, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
This little lot, this is the lot that we're speaking about here, whoops, oh. Oh gosh, that's what I do. Sorry. Uh. I don't know what that is. Um, okay, there we go. So this is the lot, so as you can see, it's kind of a funny neighborhood where it's quite diverse even in the zones. So we are in the zone RA, which kind of. You know, is this bright yellow? Right next to us is zone RB, and right across the street is R two. So RA requires four acres. RB requires one point five acres. And R two requires, um. Half an acre, I think, no, wait a minute, no, I'm wrong. I think, oh, no, no, no. RA requires four, RB requires two, and R two requires one point five. So as you can see, this lot is not out of scale with really the rest of the lots around here. So just generally already, it kind of fits in with the neighborhood. Um. In terms of trying to. Make this lot the full four acres, it would be really, really difficult to buy the the additional. You know, two point two acres that we would need to make this lot a four-acre lot, and I'll just, hopefully I can switch. To this one, can you now see this? Image?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the lot, um, you can see that the zone boundary comes through and then actually comes across the top of this lot. So. The lot just adjacent to the north, only a very small portion of that lot is actually in the RA zone. So even if we bought this small little portion, um, it wouldn't make this lot four acres. And this lot is already non-compliant with its zone, it's supposed to be two acres and it's one point oh eight acres, so that wouldn't help. And then down here, this lot is in the RA zone, it's four point two acres, the house is here. And this would not be enough. Um, in addition to the fact that this wetlands that I'm showing here on this lot, our lot. Um, goes through here, so it wouldn't. It would be very awkward to try to buy this, plus if we bought that much acreage from this lot, it would become a non-compliant itself. So we're sort of, and then everything behind is um preserved open space. So we're sort of stuck here. Um, in terms of trying to make the lot four acres. Um, and then the lot, the building width is, um. As you probably saw on the plans, it's it's here, so you see that the setback is fifty feet for both, because we're on the corner. And then the lot kind of jogs back, so the 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 distance between here and here, whoops. Is a hundred and fifty-three and it's supposed to be two hundred, so again, there's really not much we could do about that, um. We're sort of stuck with that. But you can see that this is the house that we're proposing. And it's still within the realm of everything else in the neighborhood in terms of size, in terms of setback. So, um, you know, although this is a large lot, we are fairly pretty well constrained in terms of our building envelope, where we can build. Um, because of the wetlands and the setbacks. But we feel like this house is, um, you know, that this lot can handle a house. Um, of this, you know, of this size, and and there was already a house here. So this house has already been built upon. And we're just gonna build a new house there.
Ms. Clayton, why don't we make these two slides your exhibit A one, were there any other slides you wanted to share with the board?
Nope.
Okay, and Derek, quick question for you. This application is back then for variances because this house is different than what was previously proved?
It's a new owner.
It's a different house, you have.
It's a different house, okay.
And actually, the variance expired, um.
Because they didn't, they didn't act on it.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Louisa, do you want to add anything?
Um, I think this is a sort of a typical situation in Princeton where I think it's sixty percent of the lots are undersized for their zone. Or non-compliant in their zone, and. Um, so we're just here to ask for the variances.
Okay. All right. Um. Board members, and there's no, you have no other witnesses, just the owners and the architects.
Right.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions of the owners? Or the architect, uh, if not, we'll. Allow them to summarize and then go into the public portion of the hearing. Okay. Um. Do either of you want to say anything before we open this up to the public?
No, we just, we are looking forward to hopefully um building this house in the Princeton community, and we thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, thank you, um. Claudia, has anyone, we're in the, we're going into the public portion of the hearing, Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. So giving it a couple of seconds here, we'll. Close the public portion of the hearing and again. Uh, ask the owner or the architect if they'd like to say anything before we go into executive session.
I think we're good.
Any further comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, um, okay, we're gonna go into executive session, board members. Questions, comments, motions?
Did I hear?
Yes, Stephen?
Am I on mute or not?
No, we can, I can hear you.
Okay, is this a teardown, did I hear that correctly?
The existing house has been demolished.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the old house was demolished, yes.
So is the. The dark shape there is what what is proposed, or?
Yeah.
Has as much detail as there is about what's proposed?
Well, this isn't about the house, this is about the lot.
Right, I understand that, I just. The garage is well in front of the house, whatever that is.
The plans.
The residential rules don't apply. The neighborhood's rules don't apply to RA.
But there there are draws.
It's connected to the house. So the house is designed complies with all the zoning ordinances, it's just the lot is undersized. And it's too narrow.
Derek, I think you started to say that there are. Derek, I think you started to say that there are architectural plans, though, that were submitted?
Yes. Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they're in the, they're in our package, whether on the website.
Yeah, I I support it, it's, it's, it's compliant, except for, uh, things having to do with the lot.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
I would agree as well.
I move approval. Can we go back to regular screen?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um. Michael, you've approved, um.
Yes.
Yes, any second?
One second.
Thank you, Bernice. Um, any discussions of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you follow the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, uh, good luck with the house.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time.
Lisa, nice job. Okay, um, I believe that's it for the evening. So if there are no other comments, um. Or anything anybody would like to discuss, we will adjourn.
Just one comment, um, you know. If like me, uh, you want hard copies of the plans, you can request it, it makes it a lot easier. I get them delivered to me.
No, I know they're, I I know they're a bit wide, yeah, it's easier for me to look at it on screen and print them, but I understand. The hard copies, hard copies do make a difference.
Every, every so often, somebody asks if there were plans.
Yeah.
There are.
Yeah. They're always generally, they're they're on the website, um, you know, and, uh, so.
Are they the same, what we see on the screen, is that the same as the paper?
Yes, I believe they are, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the set of drawing, there was a full set of drawings online on the, uh, on the website under this application.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but not not engineering and stuff like that, you know, but just the basics.
Yeah, this was just architecture. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, night.